Welcome to the June 9, 2025. To Valley's School Board Meeting, we welcome everyone to attend to Valley's School District. Board meeting in person for Policy 006. If you are a district resident and or taxpayer wish to comment in order to public comment section of the meeting, please complete a call and follow the procedures as displayed. Public comment is not a question answered here directed to the board. Time for the public to spend comments to move forward. This meeting is being livestreamed. We're in public members wishing to queue or listen. We are going to go through the agenda. We're going to do committees at the home because we had two committee chairs that couldn't attend this evening. So we're just going to follow the proposed board agenda and the committees will happen as they are listed in the agenda. So I'd like to call a meeting to order. Again, let's begin.
What do we need to signify the United States of America and to follow the voice says one nation under our individual clear future system?
Roll call, please.
Mr. Bob, Chair John Burden.
Here.
Hit the chair.
Here.
Tracy, Trevor Bliss.
Here.
Gary Nix.
Here.
Kyle Ward. Dana Wood, Chair Tracy Bell. Tony Anser. Six boards in this first.
No requests to speak?
Yeah.
Okay. Was there any board comments? We did not have an executive session prior to the meeting, but we did have a little acknowledgement and thank you to five members that are retiring from the school district this year. Is there any other board comments? Okay, the next action item would be to approve the proposed agenda. You voted that second. Then the, oh, second, third. Questions or comments? All in favor of approving the proposed agenda for June 9, 2025, signify by saying aye. Aye. Are there any opposeds? Okay, we now have a presentation. Give an introductions. Do you work on the budget?
Sure, kind of goes back to what's in this morning. Okay, so today I'm just gonna give the budget update. It's our final budget update before final approval next week. So going through the proposed final budget update with the changes since May 12th, we've had two additional staff resignations and with the how their replacements are budgeted, there was a decrease in salary and benefits of $28,000. We, upon some further review of department budgets, we were able to reduce another $83,000. So our overall expenditures since the last time we discussed was a reduction of $111,000. For the millage increase on the revenue side, we were able to reduce that. So now overall the average increase is 1.82%. So in Berks, that would be an increase of 5.4 and in Chester would actually be a decrease of 1.177 based on the equalized mill. Then the corresponding social security and retirement subsidy changes due to the staff resignations. So the overall revenue impact was also a reduction of $111,000. Any questions on any of those changes? So then this, this is just an updated version of the document that you've seen every time we've talked about the budget. So as you can see, it bring our overall budget for approval next week is $77,623,317, which is a 3.7% increase over the current year's budget. A new way, this is the sheet that is in front of you because it's something that you just added to the presentation. We broke it out, same numbers, just working out by the building and department budget. So you can see their actual expenditures through the years and then current year budget to next year's budget where we have landed. So, and then I know at the end of the agenda, under Technology Committee, we're going to talk about the technology budget. So I was just going to discuss that now in order to, since we're talking budget numbers. So if you look at that line item, you can see over the years, back in 2021, our actual expenses were at 1.3 million. And then they jumped up to the 1.877 in 2122, which was a large increase. But in that year, we was a purchase of perm books, Mac minis, and there were some other tech upgrades that were handled. They're done at that time. 2223 was also a year where we saw an increase, although it was actual to actual, it was a decrease. It was still a little bit higher than what had been budgeted. And those also were the COVID years and we had some of the extra S R funds at that point. So, and that was again staff laptops, district wireless system and licenses. And then in 2324, the total budget went down to 1.179 million, which there were, there was some E-rate funding that was an offset to the expenses. And then we also, due to some of the purchases we had made in previous years, there were things that did not have to be purchased in that budget. So. So now we're still finalizing current year budget stuff, 2425 items, but we were able to, with certain reductions, purchase items current year, and then we were able to remove them for next year, which was how we were able to see another savings. So. Are there any questions on any of these other building department budgets or anything on the tech budget itself?
What do you want with just general budget type of questions now, or do you want to wait until you get through the final finance?
Um, I can, I, it's really up to you. I can take them now if you'd like.
Probably should be now because next day we're gonna do this.
Yeah, next week's meeting.
Your votes might be a little.
Oh, yeah.
A couple of, a couple of general comments, and, and this may have been something that you've given us. When did we go from zero-based budgeting and to going across and telling everybody they had to cut their budget 10%?
We, once we got the original, they submitted their initial budgets to us in the fall. And then as we were going through them and going through the process in, in January is when they had, were asked to do the additional, the 10%.
So, and I know I asked several questions starting at the beginning of the year regarding IT.
Yes.
And, and it wasn't, it wasn't so much that, and I know I threw out like a $400,000 number. It's funny how that comes in close to that. And believe me, that, that was a number that was, I pulled out of the sky. My point was, I think we should be budgeting, and I might have used the term wrong, but zero-based budgeting. We need to budget what, what folks need. And, and I asked you a question last month was, how much have we spent to date from last year's budget in IT? Do we know what that number is?
From, from, in the 2324 budget or?
2425 budget. How much is, what you call a budget and actual?
Yes.
Where does our actual stand right now?
For the tech budget.
For the tech budget.
Uh, roughly around 1.19 million.
Oh, haven't spent it?
No, 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 that we have, that we are, that's where we're anticipating. So which is roughly the 400, yeah, 400 some thousand dollars.
So I, I just, I just want anybody that's listening that the 10% was something that was an attempt to try and bring the, the budget into closer to balancing back then.
Right.
But I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, board members, is we, we're looking to provide what the different departments need. And, and I don't recall that we ever saw that. So, so what I'm suggesting is, is that maybe we start, when we start this process, maybe we need a monthly update of where things stand on budget to actual. The, and it's no reflection on the IT department, but I can't believe that we are at the 11th hour and we're now making these changes that we've been asking for, for several months. So my suggestion is that we become more proactive and, and, you know, we didn't, we didn't hit our timelines with the budget, that this coming year, we absolutely have our initial budget presentation to the board in December. And so, so maybe the disappointment will, will, will go away. So like I started comparing bottom lines and, and I know you said it's like 400 some thousand dollars and you explained some of the cuts. It's very hard to follow. So I would ask that maybe we come, come up with a, a simpler way to be able to track these costs because some of it's here and some of it's there.
Okay.
Um, but in March, our budget was 77, 79. Then in May, it was 77, 7. So from May, from last month to this month, the budget went down. Total budget, total, total budget went down $100,000 roughly.
Yes.
Which was 285,000 from the beginning of the year. But yet those cuts that you just explained were not in the May budget. So if, if we're, if we're removing another 200, 300,000 between May and June, how come the difference between May and June is only $100,000 in the budget? The math just doesn't make sense to me. I believe the totals are correct because the Michigan, you know, the, the program totals on. But I just struggle to follow, I just struggle to follow how you get to those numbers when, when we're hearing tonight that you found an additional couple hundred thousand dollars that were reduced from the budget. So. Yeah, I'm not going to bore you with all the other, the other math that we did. Another, another question, which is kind of budget related. Site logic. I would like to suggest that before any additional dollars or any bond reductions or anything with site logic, that it comes to the board before that happens.
Okay.
Because my fear is we get too far beyond giving them money that their, their incentive now to come back and, and clean up the project is, it, it's not something we're gonna have to be, where they're working to get them to come there. And, and my, my last comment is transportation's a big number. Are we starting to look at transportation with, with our, our new director?
Yes, he has been looking at different, he, he took care of the summer stuff and now he is starting to look at next year's routes. He's looking at the stops. He's looking at how different developments to, to get set stops that carry forward from year to year and not some of the stuff. He's working with the, both of the contractors to get to, to know everything. So it's, he's had some great ideas so far, just thoughts and ways that he's looking at things. So I think it's nice having a fresh set of eyes on it. And I mean, he's been great. He's been able to jump in. He knows software already. So it's almost been seamless, honestly. So.
So we know we won't see, we won't see the savings if there are any in this current budget.
Correct.
But if, if we start to get monthly updates on where things are as we start to get into the startup next year, you know, maybe we can, we can kind of track that, see where that is.
Okay.
But, but I just, I think we can, I, I think we can, we do better on, on how we, so we're not at, we're on the 11th hour and we're, we're tweaking a budget.
Good.
So, yeah, I think there are questions for, thank you.
I, I have something, it's not really, it's not related to this, this budget right here.
Okay.
But what we received in the board letter was expenses on some of this stuff in technology. A couple of years ago, we were like 400,000, 500,000. When it's allocated for a certain amount and we exceed that, and it gets transferred, you know, from this pile to that pile.
Correct.
What percentage, you know, I feel like that's a large amount. That was years before you were here.
Right. I'm up on my one year anniversary.
It is before you were here. But I, I feel as the board that we should be made aware that we approved a budget for this and we were budgeted for 1 billion, but we spent 1.6. And where did that, where did those funds come from? And, you know, in our total budget, we're still within those parameters, but which bucket was it taken out of and where did it go? On, I don't know if we have something set up for a certain percentage or a certain dollar amount.
She's, she's working on that.
You're working on that?
Yeah, she, we talked about it right at the.
Okay.
Right there. That's something she's working on.
So I don't know the best way to address that, but I think we should be aware of something.
Mike wasn't maybe it's kind of wrong.
Correct.
But, but I believe that that was some infrastructure cost, maybe some, some mainframe or something that we used out of surplus, budgetary surplus of that year. But that's where it shows up. It shows up that we spent more, but I believe, and I believe it was board approved.
It was.
It probably was.
And it was, we have some extra money as budgetary reserve dollars. We, we need, we need this. And that's, that's how it should be approached. I mean, if there's something that is, is not budgeted, we should see it. But that doesn't mean that's something that, that we spend the budget. We're not to stay. You know, the budget is not, if you get X number of dollars, you don't need it. You don't have to spend it to get what you need for the next year.
Yep. That's, that's what Tracy was talking about, just so you guys know. She, she's trying to figure out what the best plan is. Always have that executive summary so we know what's, what's going on because of that. And that's been kind of a challenge for it, right? So that's what she wants to constantly have for us. So we can, to Gary's point, so we can sit there and go, okay, where, where is that, where's that coming from? Where's it going? What's, what's the story here? Right? Right? So that's something we saw.
Two people that are in those roles right now, but you weren't at that time. But when I look back at that, I probably approved it.
Right. Well, and those were, those were the years of, of the S R funds. So the state, well, the federal government's throwing money at you that has to be spent in certain amount of time on certain items. So then, you know, things were moved around and, and budgets ended up a surplus.
And, and just that, that we were purchasing in advance. So we were purchasing things that were not planned for purchase, if that makes sense.
It just, yeah, gave you that opportunity to do that.
What I, but, but Gary also mentioned that like 10%, right? I, I heard that, that's what the message was to like some of our staff about cut 10%. And we don't, we don't want to send that message across the board, right? So that's why we want to be able to be transparent. So we can sit there and go, hey, what do, what do people need? Right? And that, and then being more proactive as opposed to reactive is something we never want to do. Right? So that's why.
We do a good zero-based budget.
Correct.
And every department spends the time and, and explains what they need. And there needs to be, it can't be perfect.
Right.
But there needs to be some cushion, but, but not flood.
What's the process? Right. What's the process? If I, if I'm the, the tech ed or the history department, like, and I come in and I need to create a budget and work with you guys, how does that, what does that look like?
We share out a document that has a few years of history, all your account codes, descriptions. There's additional tabs that give detail for you to give detail of what your expenses are. And then, you know, some of them are annual, like a bunch of the licenses and like in the students' department, the tuition and those kinds of things. So people go through them. They submit for other items. They submit their, we give them a deadline. They submit their budgets to us. Then they schedule a meeting. And this year it was with me and Shelby and Rob and Rita. And we go through and they have to basically justify what they're, they're looking at. And then we look at the differences and, you know, why are you going down so low in this category but, or increasing so high in this one? We talk about it, you know, need to have versus nice to have kind of discussions.
Right.
And then we, we gather all the information. If there's any changes, they go back and look at them, or we just make them for them and send them their updated budgets. And then we start gathering all that information to bring to you, to the board.
Okay. So we're comfortable with the process? Like, do you think people need training on how to really know how to do a budget and?
I think, I, I think it works good. I mean, I don't see, I, I don't know if you have any comments, Ross?
This is my first year going through a budget.
Right.
So I'm trying to learn along the way, familiar with, with budgeting in some other districts. But that process that Tracy described, you know, a lot of really good conversations that we had, you know, while people presented. And then after they leave, when we go through and, and try to justify and make sure we understand the expenses. So a lot of hard work along the way. Certainly, I think we can get better. We can always get better. So we're open to the suggestions we're hearing tonight from the board and through, through this year. Certainly, you know, Tracy's new here. I'm new here. Got a couple of new pieces, but the feedback tonight is great and through this process. And we'll apply that into what we do next year and, you know, try to strengthen what we bring in.
So we, we do get a report that shows revenue. And it shows revenue that we took in, percentage remaining. So, so when I asked the question about what's left in IT, I didn't think it was that complicated of a question because we should have known what we have to date. And if we look at the, the, in the reports that we've received on the various budgets in the various months, when you look at the preliminary budget expenditures by object, from, from the beginning of the year, there's only three object categories that have, have changed. Object 100, object 200, and object 700. All the rest of them have been the same from the beginning of the year or beginning of the budget process until, until today. And there are salaries and benefits and equipment. All the rest of them have been consistent. So, so the, the focus of the change is really in a small category of the entire budget. So, so we should be able, we should have those numbers at our fingertips.
Yep.
And, and I think, I think a monthly update would, would be helpful. And I wouldn't ask many questions.
By department, kind of like this, this document that we shared this evening or?
By however you're gonna present the entire.
Okay.
Because, you know, okay, well, like not, not picking on IT, but since we're talking about.
I can be in the room.
So, so some of IT's in 2200, correct?
Most of IT is in 2200.
But it's also in another category.
2500, yes.
So, so if you're gonna, if you're gonna report it out, you know, in a budget expenditure at the end of the, when we go for budget time, that's the update that we should have so we can continue to track it. And if Kyle was here, he'd want it and put it in a spreadsheet, in an Excel spreadsheet, which it looks like that's what he's on. So I, I just, I think from a timely standpoint and a reporting standpoint, I, I think we should look to try and do a better job.
And we, we're also looking at the account code structure, make it easier to pull these types of reports as well. So, and to also break it down so we can get into some of the finer details of some of the things. Cause some of them are summarized into general categories, which is fine, but then it causes us to go dig, you know, have to spend more time digging.
Spend time to double click. We don't want to spend time to double click.
Yeah, right.
You guys can spend time.
So, but we can certainly, we will work on that for, for next school year then.
And just to, just not, not to reiterate, but I will, the, the site logic.
Yes.
They, you know, I, I don't, don't want to be, don't want to see us collecting, you know, behind the scenes.
Right. No, I agree. I agree. So.
All right.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'll just quick run through these. It's breakout by object. Then the revenues, which again, few, few things have changed. Still no update either on the federal budget or federal revenues for title programs. Yeah. And then just, just the normal. So the only step left is to adopt the final budget next week. And then supplemental information has been updated with all of, with the key changes. We did update the Burke School District tax rates, what they were as of Thursday when we worked on this. And then Chester as well, what they're expecting to approve if they have not approved their budget yet. Then on the impact of knowledge on taxpayers, debt service summary, which you've seen, cyber charter information, which you've seen. And then just an updated five-year estimate.
Guys, I know you want to roll this group, but no, no state budget updating.
No state, oh, yes, I'm sorry. No.
I know you said.
Yes, no news. And I even looked to see if Casbo had anything updated. And all they had shared is they were in session last week and they were in session again today. So hopefully, I know there's a charter reform that talks about the max rate of $8,000 that narrowly passed, I think was the House. It's moving on to the Senate. So that would actually be huge savings for us. But at this point, we're not sure. I think when I estimated it, if they would go with the $8,000, it was, I think, like $300,000 savings. So hopefully there is movement in that direction.
And we're still based on what we received last year.
Correct. Yes. No, there is no increase, only what we are receiving right now. So. And that would also, I mean, the governor's proposed budget included an additional adequacy supplement in that ready to learn block grant. But at this point, that additional adequacy was not included. Though the amount where you received for the current year, we did because that became part of our base. But nothing additional like he proposed. So.
And that's one of, but I know that you guys have only been here a year and it takes a year to settle in. But one of the things that we, I think it's pretty been well spoken that we always want to get better every, every year, right? If we just sat here and did what was normal and comfortable, we would just, you know, maybe we wouldn't be different. And we want to be different. So we're, we're always, all of us are always going to challenge and hope he challenges right back, right? So that, that's why we ask these questions.
Yep.
I look forward to you, you guys coming back and say, hey, this is what we think we should do. Cause that's how you get stuff done.
Right.
So I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Oh, sure. I'm back on the same thing. Can you just explain a Braxis again and how we like with the numbers shooting?
So Braxis, what we see on the expenditure side, we see on the revenue side as what? Cause they send us the invoices. We are literally just the.
Right.
Send. Right. And then, so we, we send the invoices out when the monies come into us. We, based on, for regular head, ed students, we are able to keep two and a half percent as an administrative fee. And for special ed students, we keep 5%.
Down to this amount as well.
It is, well, it, it's been fluctuating and they were a little behind on their billing. Cause I actually had some people when we, when we did send the bills out this year questioned why we were sending them out so late. They were some of my friends in other districts. So I told them it's not us, it's them. So. Sure. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, now we're into the finance committee meeting. First is to approve the minutes from the May 12th meeting. Those of you that were in attendance at that meeting. Those of you that were in attendance at that meeting.
Got a second?
This, this vote can be a vote of the entire board and it would be to move this, move it to next week's agenda. I'm in favor of approving the minutes, see if I might say aye. Aye, that's made opposed. We're going on to item B. This would be a motion for the adoption of the final twenty-five, twenty, two thousand twenty-five, two thousand twenty-six general fund expenditure budget totaling seventy-seven million, six hundred and twenty-three thousand, three hundred and seventeen dollars. And a revenue budget totaling seventy-seven million, six hundred and twenty-three thousand, three hundred and seventeen dollars. Good for a motion and a second, so move, move. Second, over. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Uh, are there any questions? This will be a roll call and this would be also to move it forward to next week's agenda for final approval.
Yes, Tom Burden.
Yes.
Name the chapter then.
Yes.
Trevor Glaze.
Yes.
Karen McHewitt.
Yes.
Jay Oliver.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Item C. This would be to approve the home set farmstead include exclusion resolution. And this would be direct. Instead of farmstead exclusion resolution for the requirements of Act One. New motion and a second. Thank you.
Second. Burden. Over. Clinton Howard, you gave it to me, I was giving it and you gave it to me.
We have a motion and a second, are there any questions or comments on the farmstead farmstead resolution?
Just for, basically, can you apply, you can apply for that only when you purchase, like, when you buy a property, it's not something you can move back into, is it?
Yeah.
So if you don't see that on your tax bill, anybody who is listening, please go do that, it is at least something.
I mean, it counts, once you're, once you get it, continue.
Right, once you do it, if, if, I did it when I bought a house and from there, almost thirty years, so.
And you, you do it every year?
No, I just, if the ones, but it shows up on your tax bill. So if you don't see that information on there and you're not getting it and you need to ensure you apply for it. Yes.
Right, very good.
To be with that on the website of, of applying for it.
We, I link, um, I know on the Burke side, the uh, any property that does not have it will give, receive a mailer in December. Um, and then it happens until the March first, I believe it is, it's been a while since I've looked at the deadlines.
Okay, that's much.
March first, yeah, to apply for that, um, so.
Is it easy enough to shed information on the website with like how to look for it?
Sure, I can, it, it may, it could be there. Yeah, I will definitely check though, for sure.
Any other questions? This should also be a roll call, count on next week's agenda, yes.
Thanks for talking, uh?
Yes.
Trevor Glaze.
Yes.
Karen McHewitt.
Yes.
Jay Oliver.
Yes.
Allison Paul, yes, motion passes.
Next item, it's item D, and this would give voting for the approval of the adoption of the proposed final two thousand twenty-five, two thousand twenty-six taxing resolutions. This is the um, the milage that's required to fund the uh, budget, so move, move.
Second, over.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, are there any questions or comments on the milage? Uh, this would also be a vote to move forward to next week's agenda. Roll call.
Nick DeCharmagne.
Yes.
Trevor Glaze.
Yes.
Karen McHewitt.
Yes.
Jay Oliver.
Yes.
Allison Paul, yes, Chandra.
Yes.
Motion passes.
And, and I apologize, it's not this, the milage, but it's also the real estate transfer tax and your income tax, both of which are one percent each. And they get, get split fifty-fifty with um whatever missing out with the property policy. Item B, this is a motion to approve the proposal from suburban water technology Inc. for a treatment system for the PFAS at Robinson Elementary at a cost of sixteen thousand, seven hundred dollars. Which I believe includes uh, that increase due to DP's response to oversize.
Correct.
So we need a motion and a second, so move, move.
Send and hold.
Thank you. Information was, was in our board package. Any questions or comments? Uh, roll call please.
Everybody says? Karen McHewitt?
Yes.
Jay Oliver?
Yes.
Allison Paul, yes, Tom Burden.
Yes.
Name the chapter then.
Yes.
Motion passes.
So there's just one related discussion item to that motion that you just passed that, or you could, Tracy, could you just give a little update?
Sure.
Cause it could impact next week's meeting.
Right.
More.
Um, along with this, we needed to replace the well pump because of um, this change. So Scott was working to gather the proposals, um, we have one, which is around five thousand dollars. And um, he was just waiting for the other one, but if it's okay with the board, we would put the um, it on the agenda if we get the other one.
We, we put it in station out to get a certain.
The sixteen seven seven number would change it, what you're saying.
No, no.
So you're, it'd be a separate, separate on, on.
Yes.
Okay.
So, so what you're asking to do is if you add the information to put it on next week's agenda, it won't go through committee, it would just be a word decision.
That makes sense.
That's fine.
And we need to lower, uh, the call.
Yes. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, discussion information items, like Tracy, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that got taken care of in the presentation, let's just throw those questions. Okay, then move to the committee meeting of the board governance, Allison, you want me to just keep going with it or you want to do it? Okay, we have a few items. First thing we need to do is approve the minutes, May twelfth. Yes, for motion and a second, move, move, second class. Are there any questions or comments on those minutes? If not, I'm. I'm in favor of moving the minute, updating the minutes for next week's agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposeds? Item B, um, I believe we're gonna table that item. So the court policy two fifty-four is gonna be tabled until July eighth. Okay. Um, then, uh, item C is, um, this would be a motion to approve. The court policy seven oh seven use of facilities, this would be a first reading. Um, Chris, do you wanna like, just kinda go through what the few changes are?
Sure. There's a, there's two, there's two parts to this, there's the policy and there's the actual fee schedule, it's a pastoric. The policy section of it, um, there's two sections where there's changes, one is on page two, uh, line, from lines two to nine. Um, where there's uh sections labeled violations. Um, it's just, uh, just notes that the district may remove any individual or group from property, from the property. If uh, this policy is not followed or related procedures. In addition, anyone who does violate this policy or the terms, um, or the facility use agreement may lose the right to request future use of district property unless the board decides otherwise. Um, other speech in the context of the policy is on page three, line thirty, thirty-two, thirty-three. Um, it just outlines that custodial fees in regards to the fee schedule change every year due to the contract of the custodians. Now, that's the, that's the policy changes. Uh, the fee schedule um is separate from the policy was attached. Uh, the reason that that's being presented to the board is just to reflect uh, that what's uh, in, on the fee schedule that's attached to the policy. It's reflective of what's on our information system at the district. Um, and as far as like the, it's the actual detail of the fee structure. Um, Tracy brought a lot of these points in the special um, note section uh, to e- explain any questions that you might have regarding the fee schedule itself.
I was just kinda curious if they'd be agreed to those or whatever. You know, when, when a class went on the fees for, you have the relating to the episode, we're really just going ourselves here, aren't we?
Well, read what's in category one. So if you listen to what's in category one, it's, it's, it's like affiliated with large.
Okay, so yeah, now.
They're, they're out, they're outside but affiliated with the school.
Alright, okay, I'm sorry.
You got you, got you. What, what did the, um, what was the light fee before?
A hundred dollars.
A hundred dollars?
Mm-hmm.
Every time?
Yes.
Over, okay. So that's a result of a study of what LED?
Yes, uh, yes.
We're talking about this now? Cause the only thing, I think, I'm just gonna understand the two-hour minimum. That's the only thing that, that pops out to me, because there's situations where teams would only need lights for forty-five minutes to wrap up a practice. Or a half hour to wrap up a practice for an hour. So that's the only thing that I don't understand why we would do a two-hour minimum. We didn't have a two-hour minimum before. And then actually, because of block, right, we put a hundred dollars to turn the lights on.
Or a four-hour block.
I agree.
So, so we, we charge on, I, you're saying on an hourly basis?
Same, according to this, yeah.
And, and that's tracked based on the facility use that you say you want to field for an hour.
Yeah.
And then, well, well, I would, I'd, not, not that you want the field for an hour, you want the lights. For an hour.
Yeah.
And so, I don't know exactly how this works, so I'm asking, this is a question. So, let's say you want to field for an hour, you put in your facility use, no, I'm sorry, you want the lights for an hour, so you put in the facility use. And that goes to somebody that turns the lights on and off.
Yes. But I, um, can, can you limit the amount of time though that you need to add? And honestly, I don't know, cause I haven't put in any facilities requests without looking at the software to see.
I believe you can program this for the amount of time that you live on.
Right, but on the ML schedule request, I'm just saying, you can enter like you want the fields from four to nine, but you only need the lights from eight to nine, that's, that's my question.
Sure, in special moods.
Special moods, if you do, okay, sorry.
Then who picks that up and who takes care of turning the lights on? Okay, so, then.
Send you stuff.
And, and I know they're, they're remote, they're virtual, so they can turn them on and off.
Yes.
So essentially, our lights are programmed based off of what we submit a facility request for.
Right.
Essentially, yeah.
The problem becomes, I want the lights at seven o'clock, it's, and the lights come on four, seven o'clock. But it's quarter up, it's getting a little bit dark, I want the lights at six forty-five now. And what are we doing in those situations? Are we going back to the group now and saying, you're at an hour fifteen minutes, so we're gonna charge you extra fifteen dollars? So we were simply just trying to make it easier, it's going from a hundred dollars for four hours to theoretically.
Thirty.
Well, thirty for two hours.
Right.
And two hours is most of the time that people want to watch. So you've gone from a hundred to thirty, you have the savings there and it gets you out at the fifteen minutes here, five minutes there, ten minutes there.
But it does say rounded to the next four hour, or even the two hours.
That's gonna become, I needed the lights five minutes earlier, I needed the lights ten minutes.
Well, it happens, it happens, because like when it was dark, it was raining, right, that's to your point, so it, yeah, I, I see your point, right?
And then we were not going back to a group and saying, you only requested an hour.
Yeah.
And, and it's, it's thirty dollars instead of fifteen dollars, you know? But when it comes down to it, it's up to you guys.
Well, how is still, they pay after? So they pay for the custodial, they pay for any of the, you know, plating or anything like that. So if we are tracking, like, okay, they send a, a message saying I needed it six forty-five, but they only requested seventy-eight. That's your partial use, you're gonna be filled for the two hours, so we have that.
Tracking, but the. Right, thanks, I need it for fifteen minutes. It doesn't go back into the ML schedule system.
That, they didn't request that time, so it's untracked.
Yeah.
And have somebody go in, change the request and go through all the steps, it's. And then seriously, you're gonna get into a situation of, I needed ten minutes early, you're really charging me fifteen dollars.
How do, you think, how do we build, do we build like monthly?
We do, um, we, at the end of each month, Suzanne puts together all the, the custodial overtime and uh, she's able to run with the new light system, she's able to run reports to see. Uh, what the light usage and, and then the bills go out, the invoices go out at the end of each month. We are looking at um, different ways of changing the invoicing, um, it's made a little bit easier to. So, so there's something that your, your usage, your usage would be your, your type per. Like, it, it, so it doesn't matter if they called, if the lights were then put on in six forty-five. If they called, thanks to many others that they called.
Listen, the, the part of it is, is like, you, you're talking about daylight savings time, like, let's, let's look at spring sports for example, right? Because that's what you and I are most familiar with.
Hmm.
It's, it's dark at five thirty for a week and a half, after that period starts. So we're really, the, the, the request for lights, I would hope, would reduce itself after daylight savings time. So you're only gonna need, you're only gonna have teams that need the lights for an hour or, or an hour and a half, which would then be two hours. Yeah, there's gotta be some education around this and some processes that we're gonna have to discuss.
You've got to have the inventory of previous year's usage, like what we built for and see how many blocks were in two-hour time frames.
Well, you can track that now, the, the LEDs probably look better.
Yes.
So, so we built everybody up till the end of May and now the end of June, and of course, it won't be that big, but.
Right, well Suzanne is working there, she's working on the, up through the end of May, I know now, I'm not sure what's going on yet, so.
So it's like, and just to be clear, there's no, that's only a few during the week, right?
That, that is actually spelled out, like, we tried to spell that out in the special notes. Yeah, when events take place outside of regular hours and when custodians are reassigned from there.
Our quote's pretty good, I think, I know we had an issue with. Let's do ball, year two ago.
There is.
It's gonna be for the whole there, it voices the D. Yeah, I still got it for two million basketball and I, I get the mail and I gotta take him to Roswick. Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
It wouldn't, it's for day, I do.
Okay.
Yes, so we're, we're, we are working on um, on collecting from any outstanding bills at this time, so. And any organizations, we have um, shops on multiple, we need hard copy, mail, we need email, invoice, so business office.
Our, our, we serve organizations that are just Twin Valley kids, kids in, in the area that go to school here, because parents are taxpayers, right? With fun with school, they don't have a lot of money.
Broke it down, I know, we don't worry about.
I, I see it, but like, like, how, how do we, like, how, how do we get that message out and, and really have it? So my suggestion was before, we really need to do a much better vote, knowing who the president of the youth organizations are or fan, like. Right, that way you, we can go right to that and have the conversation set up, right? Cause I know Twin Valley Youth Baseball is struggling, cause they don't have a lot of funds. And I don't, I think they're, they're not, they're not mad as they're getting a bill, they just didn't think that price was what they had heard. So I wanna be able to talk those things through with the right people.
Right.
Right, and they pay so often, so there's gotta be some responsibility on the organizations as well, right?
Right, right, and any um, new approvals that I, since I've been involved in the process, I have um, looked at the information, I have made some. Um, decisions based on the category, I've had people reach out to me and then I've just converged with Rod and Rita to just make sure that my, my process is right, because I. because there was an organization that was not all Twin Valley, so they, they just assumed that they would be one category, and then I had to move them to category three, which was.
Yeah, what I'm saying, I want those conversations to be had, and then, you know what I mean, like, make sure that everyone is on the same page.
All of that, yes.
Okay.
So, when they sign up for the request, they still, this dates, oh, sorry.
In, in the schedule?
Correct, yeah.
It's like, it pops up on the home screen, because I haven't been in there for a very long time, but, so it pops up on the, on the home screen, they can see it.
They can see.
And then you go, okay, so we.
Now, the problem could be, I don't know how far advanced the people are doing it, so the person that's scheduled only for three, four, six months from now, when they're getting the bill, eight months from now, that may not be the same person.
Yeah, exactly, that's what I was gonna say, but.
And we do, and, and this matches what's on the facility's website as well, so we make everything uniform so that everyone is getting the same information at the same time. And how often does the fee schedule change for the year, do we change it to something like?
We change, we approve, we approve the change.
Right, so.
Whenever it comes in front of us.
Right, so every time we have fee change, it has to come through the committee, and that's, I guess, one of my questions that Chris and I talked about early with San Perun, is, is there a way to have this update in real time, or is there, is it, is it a certain time every year? So what I'm saying is, what's stopping an organization from saying, oh, the fees are great right now, we're gonna book it for the next five years?
Sweet, sweet. Of course, certainly.
Okay, and that fee is locked in for that period of time.
And this fee schedule, I don't think this changed for years.
Right.
So, we're not operating.
This is.
They get two thousand and nineteen.
Right, right.
When I was looking at it, you know, particularly at sports.
Custodial fees are in here, that says, they're, they're gonna automatically
Right.
renew at the door, contractual brings.
Correct.
And that doesn't come back to the board.
Right, that's why we put that one.
Excellent.
Every July one, we would update this.
Okay.
So we okay to move this forward for first reading? Do you have a motion in the second?
Second. You can say how you use per hour, that's good.
Yes, I have super event there, I just wanted to clarify there. Sorry, Eric.
We'll make that revision.
We should sync them now.
So it would be per custodial meeting.
So there's a motion in the second, Jay and Trevor, are you okay with under custodial fees adding after the forty dollars and thirty-six cents per hour?
You guys certainly would like to do this change, because it would be secondly based on collective bargaining.
Yes, that's on thirty, bring it on the page.
So, Jay and Trevor, you're okay with that?
Yeah. Yes.
Yeah. So the changes that was the per hour one, added to the custodial fees and under custodial fees increased that year based on collective bargaining. Since this is the first reading, this could be a voice note, so all in favor moving forward, say aye, any votes? Yeah, I want you to say just a second. And we'll move on to the instructional committee. Two action items, one is to approve the minutes from May twelfth, do you have a motion and a second?
Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions on the minutes from May twelve? Eric Dunn, all in favor, this voice note, all in favor, stick your eye, by saying aye.
Aye.
Any votes? When we go over this session, Dr. Jill will explain the instruction, induction program. Thank you.
Handout, everybody. I think I'd like to start by sharing that after attending tonight's festivities prior to the board meeting, the induction plan is probably most advantageous, that we make sure that, you know, the purpose of this is to support our professionals as they come forward and start anew, and have a long, healthy teaching tenure while they're here at the academy, right? So the purpose is to build that professional support system and guide them into lifelong learning and fostering that understanding of the community and the culture here, and I'll just give you a synopsis of what's here on the paper. Certainly, our approach is to adjust as needed, and I met with the most recent inductees in their first year survey, and have conversation with them to see what we can do to approve our plan for the upcoming year, and having different topics at a variety of meetings. We have a onboarding process in August, at the beginning of the year, prior to the start of the school year, to begin the process and lay out all of the terms and pieces for them and support them in that process, and then meet with them monthly, they meet with their principals and they meet with their mentors almost weekly. Twin Valley is in state compliance, we have completed through our comprehensive plan, we are in compliance with chapter four, and it's mandatory now that it'll be two years. So the individuals that were hired last year and started their twenty-four, twenty-five year, for their first year, will go into year two at this upcoming year, so we'll be running two programs side by side. The rules and responsibilities are outlined for them, this information is available to all of them, they get a handbook, handbook at the beginning of the year so that they can look at that information, we have the multiple days of the summer, they get an experienced educator with at least more than three years, I think we probably do more than that, but that's the requirement, and sometimes depending on certification of the individual, it may be somebody with just three years' experience. So that just depends on some of those specialty certificates that individuals have. They provide weekly meetings, meeting with their mentors, I would have to say that was a highlight of in May when I met with the new teachers, and I asked them, you know, what was the highlight, what did they really feel that they got out of the induction program from their mentors and their building principals? The new teachers this year, the five that I met with, could not speak highly enough of their building administrators and their individual mentors. The time and commitment that they provided to each of the new teachers to support them, to feel that they had a successful first year, and looking forward to their, to their next year. And then there's a list of the program components, what is it that the district level topics are and the building level, and we share that responsibility. So I'll go over this induction plan at an upcoming administrative meeting with all of the principals, so they get a, you know, just a refresh of what their responsibilities are within this program, and then we also meet with the mentors as well. So I just wanted to give you a highlight of the induction plan that we go through over two year period. Anybody have any questions?
I assume that will turn you.
Thank you.
So let me, let me ask you a question that kind of contains this, but not so much, what's our recruiting plan?
So our recruiting?
Yeah, yeah, so, I know we're gonna be, some teachers, and that's just part of the nature of the piece, but what, how do we, how do we outreach, you know, you know, become partners with universities so we can get some good teachers in here, and then keep them the way we just had thirty-five years of teachers, right?
So probably gonna lean to my counterparts a little bit, being as new as I am to the district.
Yeah.
We had a nice group of applicants this year, and I was able to participate in round two with the principals, and I actually participated in round one from some internal candidates that we went through, so I just had a conversation with Dr. Clements in the, in the library, he had a history, he has a history opening, he had sixty applicants, you know, which that speaks to the climate and culture that exists here within this, the school district, that today, when we know as educators, there is a lack of certificated individuals going through, sixty applicants for one history position here at Twin Valley this year. We had a plethora of elementary applicants as well, and had some individuals that stood and taught here, have done long-term self positions here, and so the principals have been able to watch them in the classroom before bringing them forward for an interview. Rita, do you wanna add to that as well?
If I can add just a couple things, I think are really neat too, so, our, our teachers at the high school and our apprenticeship, you know, we have a number of students going down to the elementary, middle, and learning that, so you look at long-term recruiting, certainly exposing the students to that field, seeing if they like it, getting some hands-on learning. I know my son in another district did that senior year, and now he's in that district, you know, working as a teacher, so it's great to recruit as well from within our, our community. Cootstown did a good job, this is our first year we had a student leaving the campus to go over to Cootstown to be part of their education program on campus. I know that's a tough drive for us, we're not in the best position in the county, but that's a program that we hope grows, that, you know, for all those students who are kind of already making that decision that they wanna become teachers, so I think those are great tools, and I think Jill said it well, I noticed with Rita and going through the first year of hiring, is our principals do a really good job with those substitutes, those long-term substitutes, those daily substitutes, getting them some experience, getting to visit them in the classroom, go observe them, see how they work with our students, because many of them who are strong and demonstrate that, then the following year, a year after, are in line for, for some of the open positions, so. Really all great tools, some short term and some long term to, you know, keep the pipeline moving, Mr. McCann.
So I just have a real quick question, so, so I love this induction plan and the mentorship, and what is our long-term support plan for our teachers that have been here? We've talked about the total experience learning, and I think that there are some teachers that have been here for a very long time, that they could use some, I don't know, just an additive, just some appreciation and maybe some rejuvenation, some ideas, some new ideas for in classrooms, things like that, so. I was just looking for, maybe, is there a way to kind of find out at least who might be looking for that, who might be? It's, 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 there's something called a total experience learning academy, it was from my alchemy, and I got to attend an open house for it, and it was fantastic way for, I think, some of our most seasoned teachers and women to just be able to be like, oh, you know what? That's a really cool idea, I hadn't thought about that, or just to, to, to just add to that extra little, I hate glitter, but like glitter, is, you know what I mean?
Oh, okay.
We have strong, we have fantastic teachers, but sometimes everybody just needs a, a rejuvenating boost in that way, that's what I'm asking.
So, you know, just at the bigger picture, I know Jill is new, but, you know, I had the team, and Amy, and all of us, really looking to dig into our professional development and our schedule for the next couple of years, and part of that is kind of assessing the needs, as Jill's been taking the lead, going around to each group, working with the principals and teachers, adding to what we already had, but kind of forecasting. We do have an opportunity later this week for all of our admin team to get some hands-on, opportunity to look at the total experience learning program, so they're gonna demonstrate it on a lesson to us in, in a hand one way. By no means have we vetted that, or, you know, close to making any, you know, recommendations, but the whole admin team will get a chance to, this week, participate in a lesson and a little bit about it, and we'll have some more discussion to see, you know, if there's, and certainly to bring that back to the board, we're just at this point trying to get some baseline information program, so. But beyond that, big picture, Jill's certainly been leading us, you know, multifaceted professional development that meets the needs of all of our groups, and that's kind of one of her kind of, you know, long list of objectives in these first few months, but has been one of us tackling that schedule for the next year and the upcoming years, so.
Thank you.
Is that the program that Bill McQuaid's involved in?
It is.
Okay.
If I could just follow up too, Allison, as you had asked, I had an experience with the total learning experience prior to coming to Twin Valley, so I have a little bit of knowledge for that, but I would say, you know, part of your question was, how can we make sure that we are taking care of our teachers that have given their life right here to Twin Valley, and so on Wednesday, we have a professional development day, and I had laid out, and I've emailed them, they've received two or three emails, gonna be at this point, laid out a little nugget at the beginning, and then the schedule, and then today, a list of questions, and we're meeting collectively together as content areas, so all of the high school departments are meeting, the kindergarten teachers across all three buildings are coming here, first grade and so on, the whole way through, we have about twenty-four groups, and they have a list of things that they need to pull together for me, and one of that is, what is it that you need at department level, what professional development do you need as an individual, what do you need collectively as a group, what needs refreshed from what we have in our core anchors? What is it that you need for supplemental, so we've gone through that, and administration has been assigned to each of those groups, and will float in and out to make sure the conversation continues to go, but it'll start at the teacher level, and then the spokesperson will provide me with feedback after the three hours of, because oftentimes we don't get to sit down and dialogue with each other, and so I'm giving them that time on Wednesday, and then to provide me with that feedback so I can plan accordingly.
And to that end, it doesn't have to be that program, I'm just looking for something, it just seems to be a, a program, but whatever they need, that's what I'm looking for, it's not one particular solution.
I like that you're asking for their input, some of our previous administrators that are not here thought they knew better, and I don't think, I don't think our PD was as effective as it could be, so asking them for what they think they need, I think that's a big step, I think that's good.
Yes. Well, they're the ones, I would say, they're the ones in the trenches, so they need to tell us what they need, and we need to go in and see, support them in that hole, so. We'll continue to do that.
Do a survey?
Yes.
Do a survey?
Any other questions?
You're welcome.
We're going to the final committee, which is the technology committee. First action item would be a motion in the second to approve the minutes from May twelfth, do you have a motion in the second? Second. Questions, comments? All in favor of moving the minutes forward for approval next month, or next week, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any votes? We have two discussion items, probably believe the one was already addressed, but Mr. Scobordian, the technology audit update.
Thank you, the tech board is underway, and just wanted to give a little preliminary information on where we are in the process. Trace and I met with Scott Major today, we spoke with him last week as well, and just have a few updates, and, you know, first of all, he was very complimentary to Mike and his department. They're providing information and embracing the process and providing everything they need to really allow Scott to, and his team to provide us with some, some great feedback. Surveys were distributed, we pushed those out a couple different times, and we don't have those results yet, we look forward to getting them and sharing them, but we had a hundred and thirty-one high school students respond, we had a hundred and twenty K to twelve teachers or faculty members, and then we had eighty-five administrators and support staff. So when you look at that, we're up around three hundred and thirty or plus responders, we look forward to getting that information. The IU staff, Scott and his teammates are meeting, I believe, this week, or, you know, over the next couple of days with teams of teachers and principals from each of the five buildings, so they can also get kind of a face-to-face meeting, direct feedback, someone they wanna look at that in comparison and contrast to the survey feedback, and draw, you know, kind of conclusions from both. As I said, they met with Mike and his team, and will continue to hold information from our technology department. And, you know, Scott was excited, he's, you know, getting the information in, and then the next step is to put it together, compile it, and get it into a format that he looks forward to sharing with us. Initial goal was the end of June, he's pretty close to that, he said it may be early July, when he gets the report to us. Certainly when we get it, we'll share it with the board, and then we'll, you know, look forward to updates, work with the board through the technology committee. technology committee and talking about the priorities within that. And we know Mike will be a big part of that and leading that effort with us to, you know, take that information and, you know, talk with the board about it, get some feedback from the board and chart our goals and objectives moving forward. So it's, it's kind of midstream right now. We look forward to getting an update when we have the report in hand. Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you. Technology budget update. I said we kind of addressed it.
Right, yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Super test report.
Kind of just a few brief items. Again, very exciting week. Our last full student day was today. So we stopped in the cafeteria for a nice lunch and it was the last one. So I got to start packing. That's a forum.
Maybe that's not even.
That's solid. Solid. And pizza and everything else. What a great job they did, not only for the students, but us adults. So. June 11th, as Jill said, is a full in-service day. We're looking for that. That's the last day for our teachers. Many highlights that, you know, it's the end of the year and too many to bring into this report. And certainly none stronger than Saturday's high school graduation ceremonies are a main highlight. Special thanks to our high school administration, all of our board members and staff members for their contributions. Large class, when you look at our upcoming classes, it's one of the larger ones, 240 participated in the ceremony. Very large crowd of friends and family. And I was in the stands last year up at that corner, but more, more, more people it seemed were filling those, those seats and chairs. And we wish the class of 2025 well as they take their, their next steps. We thank the foundation, the Community Education Foundation. Last week's senior walk, really exciting, one of those culminating events that involves all of our students, youngest and oldest. You know, it's a great chance for our older students to go back and meet our elementary students, inspire them. And I think even more than that, I think our staff at the elementary schools really enjoy seeing, you know, their former students. I couldn't be at all three places at one time. I was over at Roudeson, but I know we had different folks, you know, checking it out at each of the buildings and just what we're seeing from that. So thank you. The Athletics Hall of Fame did an excellent job about a week ago, week and a half ago. We, five new members were inducted, Ashley Hoffman, Brian Holden, Kevin LePage, Kim Walsh and RJ Rent. We thank them for their outstanding contributions and special thanks to Alison Foster and the other staff members who contributed to prepare a really nice event that night. As Gary mentioned, we thanked our 24, 25 retirees. Some were able to make it here this evening. Others, you know, were not. But we thank all our retirees for all their contributions over the past years. We have an upcoming event. June 20th is the Community Education Foundation fundraiser at the Redding Phillies. Tickets are available. Those tickets include a buffet meal. So they're in that, I believe along the third base or left field side. You know, one of those picnic areas and those are available on the website. So if you go to the website, just scroll down a little, there's a big flyer for the Redding Phillies. Click that and really easy to buy those tickets. Amanda said the sales are going pretty well, that we've had a pretty good response. So she's encouraged by that. And then we give in all of our spring athletic teams and really amazing season, you know, several teams went very far into playoffs. And a couple of those teams just wrapped up their seasons in the last week. And then we wish the best to our boys lacrosse team, team that earned a trip to the PIAA semifinals. That's tomorrow, Tuesday, June 10th, six o'clock PM, Perkiel and Valley High School. So they wish the team good luck and they have our support. And then that concludes my report.
Okay, thank you.
I'm streaming.
There is, yeah. NFHS has the live stream link for that game. It's public already. You do have to pay for it. You do have to pay for it. You can cancel anytime in 1395.
PayPal is right in pages.
No more discussion. We have many more discussions.
Yeah, I have one comment on the, well, two, the graduation. That's an awesome event. And, and I was reflecting on my numerous drives back and forth with numerous games after that I always have to attend. But as a coach and then being able to grab a diploma, I don't think there's a more special moment for me personally. Cause baseball is just, for me, is just a tool to help grow young men, right? And to get that diploma for them is really special. So thank you for allowing us to do that. Second comment is seeing those teachers. That's, that's what teaching is all about, right? And that's, that to me is what makes, I'm serious, that's what makes this district special. Cause I have friends that are teachers that I wouldn't share here. That you, you know what I'm saying? Like and see those teachers.
Totally agree.
But what I'm saying is that that's makes the commitment to this district of why we do those things, that commitment much stronger. So the people that just retired and Rita and Scott, it's, it's hard to see you go because sometimes we can't believe that secret sauce. Right? And hopefully people understand that. So to be a part of this is really special. And I hope people actually really understand that. Cause it took me a little bit of time to actually truly understand that. So thank you. And I, I love everything about what we're doing right now. So, thanks sports.
Welcome. Second Jay's comments on graduation. That's something that, that was my second graduation and I can't wait for next year. Yeah, it's so much fun. And next year with, with Cooper graduating, it.
It's requesting anybody.
I know that a lot of people put a lot of work into that and, and, you know, all of the community members that I'm friends with, they loved it. You know, it's nothing but rave reviews. And then to that boys lacrosse team that I'm very much so connected with. There's three boys that were All-American this year. Drew Engels Jr. who earned All-American, Dylan Coro is a senior who earned All-American. And then probably the special, well, the first boy from Twin Valley that I know of, AJ Christie was an academic All-American. And that's something that I think is, is really special. Yep. Proud of those kids. I look forward to tomorrow.
And it's, did you tell me it's the furthest that a Berks County boys lacrosse team has ever gone?
To my understanding, it is no boys team from Berks County has ever made a semifinal, the double A game. Now, my source for that is because Twin Valley girls were the first team to do it four years ago from a boy, boys or girls. And we know that it has been a boys team since then to do it. So it makes sense. Lacrosse has been around for two years.
I don't think the administration for, yet again, it's already best to give out diplomas. Cause that is, that is the best day.
It's chaotic, but it's perfectly, it's, it's also chaotic.
And, and just the faces of the kids as they come up and they recognize.
It's not, it's just like that.
Yeah, they're so excited.
I also want to thank the administration for recognizing the students that are going on to. Yes.
I think over the years, graduation has been made a lot smoother. It used to be much more chaotic over the years. Having, having a great study where all family members can go, where they're not rationing tickets. Weather permitting, we're, we're in good shape. The community members I've talked to have all just raved about it. And it's like, you know, first we were complaining a little bit of a try, but they're like, it was worth it. It was worth it. It all worked. And retirees, it's really hard. Thank you, Rita. You're right, and we're up here, but it's, it's really, we've had so many dedicated employees here. And it's kind of heartfelt, you know, to swallow like that. It's a lot of years of service, a lot of dedicated people that really built us up. To Rock, to Jill, Chris, Mike, and even Sal and Tracy for attending eight board members. That's pretty good. People pay attention to that. They really do. I went in afterwards and thanked the teachers. I said, you know, the board really appreciates that, that they take the time to come to graduation. I didn't forget you. And I know they do it for the students. And, you know, some of them, we, you know, we're getting close to the retirement age. Maybe see some more numbers next year. And Rita, they say it's disorganized. They ain't seen nothing.
Yeah.
You helped us organize it and made it, made it run smooth, handing out the diplomas. I've only missed one graduation since I've been on the board. My favorite is still the one that was at the Redding Phillies Field. That was the best graduation we ever had. That was awesome. But that venue at the Sovereign Center, again, it is dumb. Like someone said that tickets basically are unlimited. Slowly it keeps growing and growing. But I don't care what they say. You've helped organize it and it doesn't look like a train wreck where in and out the diplomas. It, I think all of us will agree, it's probably the highlight of being on school board. You know, watching kids that you've seen go through, whether you've coached them or whether you know them. But, you know, we appreciate all the support that administration and people have given. They tell us that we're the only board that does that. I don't think so. I think there's other boards that, that hand out diplomas. Maybe not quite as robust as, as what we do with every diploma getting handed out, handed out, but. Anyways, thanks, thanks for everyone for being there.
We have retired staff members that came back as well.
Yeah, and some of them like, well, they, they come as long as the students that they've had. Like Sandy being just like two years ago, I guess her last class came through. Jeanie Bettinard, she was another one's graduate that retired and she followed her graduates through. She's got a few more years to go yet. So, so the whole band is pretty nice. Does anybody have anything else? The, the, oh, we, so anything to offer? I know it's a very meeting, but.
Yeah, no, I'm good.
For, for Mr. Yields, we have a proposal that Scott's reviewing right now. It'll probably be on the agenda in July. He's to read through it, make sure he's comfortable with it. One of the last things he did weigh in on. So that, if the board groups that, that can start that process. So, and, and once he looks through it, if there's no changes, Rita, did you send it to? Okay, Leah, you have a contract. You'll see a sub.
Yes. You don't have to come work.
So, so enter this, Scott, Leah looking at it. Give her two sentences, if anything needs to be changed, then we'll play it to administration before. So, motion to adjourn?
So move.
All in favor? Thank you.